Hey.
Hey, how's it going?
I was talking to my old wife. He was, I'm lamenting about our late children. They've got containers that are dirt based. He's saying, geez, I'm looking at steel and the price is just 300% higher. I'm just crazy.
No Amy?
Yeah. I know.
Crazy world.
My joints don't like me as much as they used to, apparently.
Well, this is up north.
Probably just getting older.
Okay. CCB now.
Well, I know that.
And my knees have never liked me, but.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bill, how've you been?
Couldn't picture center for.
Yeah. I feel that. That's been my everyday.
You're on vacation.
That's what I thought too. I sent you an email.
You gotta stay in somewhere more often.
At 94 or whatever it's supposed to be. Hey, as long as you're. Yeah. You get a nice breeze back there or a little bit. As long as you're staying in depth, you want to come over. You need mine.
I know. I want to get it done tomorrow.
All right.
So Hodges, did they call you?
Yeah, he texted.
You did talk to him. What do you think of their, what their ideas? Is there any? I recommended, well, he discussed what he was thinking with me and I said, we have to start. Because I have to redo the plot. And because it would have to be one size fits all in that area. So I don't know if that's a, if that's an opportunity or not, because they're one.
That almost is the same tone of my. It's giving up.
Oh, no.
You're kidding.
Oh, no. Uh, yeah, I never. There was a time in my life where I would meticulously go through and set all my ringtones and other tones for notifications from my phone. Now I'm just like, I go through entire phones without changing. I'm just like, I don't know.
I did have some. Yeah. Containers are, they held like.
Oh, at Customs?
Yeah, Long Beach. They tried Vancouver and that's not much better. Jester's. So we're two weeks to three days.
Is it because of that? Because of the barge was stuck in the canal?
No, no, just typically this time of year, but it's even worse. All the stuff.
I know.
A lot of containers. Christmas season. And we share some of those containers from our clients. It's, it's the worst that it's been so long.
I felt like that was kind of at least 30 hours after. Customers getting mad?
Well, typically we carry at least two months of inventory. And the reason we're bad is it's never happened. If you ship it sink or something like that. So we're still able to ship to our customers. It goes on much longer.
I need to get on the website. We're just a pepper spray.
Okay.
Just tell me what you want.
Figure it out.
Yeah, tell me what you want.
I get nervous jogging. Not like I'm like a target, but.
Well, it's not.
If I'm like five miles away jogging, somebody wants to mess with me, I'm probably gonna.
It's not just the two.
Yeah, anything.
Yeah, let me know what you, send me a quick email.
Hi, Kelly. Good, how are you?
Okay, all the equipment's working? We can get started? Welcome, everybody. Hiawatha Regular Council Meeting, June 16th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Jerry Moinkle.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Steve Dodson.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
So move. Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Citizens input, is there anybody in the, out there in the audience? Which we got a big audience. This is fun.
That's nice.
Um, yeah, that's nice. That would like to talk about an item that's not on the agenda? You're welcome to approach the mic and let us know what's going on. Be happy to listen. If not, we'll continue on rolling on. Report from council members, myself, Kim.
I just like the fact that there's dirt moving out there. It's a good sign.
Yeah.
Lots of dirt being moved in town, so.
Lot of questions, lot of questions have been fielded, so.
I have a couple of items. Uh, I'm, uh, Crime Stop Hopper Board yesterday, we had our meeting. And they had several tips relating to the one crime. And another tip on another crime and both people were arrested, which was good, so. Tip lines working very well. And then also attended the Water Board meeting last night. And they passed a resolution approving the Water Board wages wage increase. And also the water treatment plants are currently operating about 11 hours per day as compared to about seven. It is all in relation to the dry weather we're experiencing. A lot of customers are using irrigation systems. And a lot of them are adding new ones where they didn't have them before. But so far, you know, the water supply is doing quite well. And then MSA Engineering is working on the detention tank project at the treatment plant located at 2030 Boyson Road. And the Rolling Prairies Development Utilities are in place. Streets have been poured. Dell Ridge Development Utilities are in place and water services are being installed. And development has begun for 2112 Robbins Road. And that's all I have.
I continue to thank you, Steve, for being on both those boards, Crime Shopper and the Water Board. Thanks for your help.
Anybody else? My pleasure.
Kim?
There we go. I'd like to just take a minute to recognize Chief Mike Nessloggi tonight. This is his official last council meeting. That we will be blessed with his presence. We want to congratulate Mike on his retirement as chief and certainly happy for you, sad, sad for us. But wanted just to recognize you in all of the efforts that you have put in and with great pride as well for the last, well, 28 total years as volunteer and, and as full-time service as well. But the last 16, almost 17 years as fire chief. So just really want to thank you for just a tremendous job in helping our community grow. Not only grow as we look at our population growth, but certainly the many different avenues that we went down with the ambulance service, along with so many people that you've coached and taught to be fire firefighters and paramedics and all of the above. Just want to really take that time to recognize you and thank you for that, for all of what you've done.
Awesome. And he ain't going anywhere. We're gonna.
That's, that's right. We'll rule him in for other things. He happens to also be a Hiawatha resident, so I'm sure we'll find lots of avenues for him to walk down the path with us. And then also just to remind everybody, we will be hosting a celebration retirement party for, for Mike on June 25th from four to six at the Hiawatha Community Center. So hopefully everyone will be able to join us and wish him, wish him the best in his new endeavor.
Awesome. Thank you, Kim. Okay, anything else? Anybody? Okay, we'll move right on to business. First item, public hearing on a proposal to enter into a development agreement with Hiawatha Properties LLC at 720 through 750 Robbins Road and provide publication of notice thereof. And so we'll start the public hearing at 5:37. Carrie, do we have anything in the mail?
No, we did not.
And would anybody like to speak on behalf?
Well, we'd like to, but we don't.
No, tell us, everybody, how.
We like hearing from you.
How you were so sneaky and smart to buy the building prior to this price change. Very lucky. Yeah, yeah. You got a rabbit's foot in your pocket or?
Two of them.
Perfect. I know.
So the, I guess.
1720 through 1750.
1720, 1750, so plan right now, phase one, there's four buildings, 12,000 square feet each. Plan's going to be commercial, bi-industrial, multi-tenant, flex space. And then there's going to be four more buildings behind that. And then to the north, there's going to be two 16 to 30,000 square foot buildings over the north of that. So this is phase one of probably four phases going forward. It's just going to be rental, flex space.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah. We, we did a business visit with the underground guys, me and Kim did. And that building is beautiful. Did a nice job on that one up there at Kettleson, so just letting you know that. Very impressed and keep them, keep them popping up.
Actually, everything on Kettleson is pretty much full now.
Yeah. Awesome.
That's terrific. Congratulations, Tim.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim.
Great job. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at 5:39. Consider resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the development agreement between the City of Hiawatha and Hiawatha Properties LLC for 720 and 750 Robbins Road.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Next item, public hearing on proposal to enter into a development agreement with Newmark Make Inc., DBA, Ogden Adams Lumber and Lumberland Partners LLC and provide the publication of notice thereof. So we'll start that public hearing at 5:40. Carrie, anything in the mail?
No.
Nothing. Anybody want to speak in behalf? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Kurt Dunne. I'm the operations officer at, I'm part of the, the Cedar Rapids. Just want to express our excitement and thank you for allowing us to come tonight. We're really looking forward to this project. When we, we started the process of entering into kind of a relocation option, the property on Kettleson Drive that came kind of right to the surface as a part of the, of our. We're really looking forward to beginning construction on our new 20,000 square foot homeyard slash home center. And we're really looking forward to moving 20 jobs too. And in this process, the city administrator and all the staff in the city, they were just wonderful. I think that's kind of one of the huge things that really helped us start on the property that we created. Just want to say thank you and we really do look forward to going to give your community a growing effect.
Awesome.
Look forward to having you.
Yeah, Kurt and Marty were excited about this and I actually drove around at your old location and, and there's a lot, a lot of footprint there, so it's going to be perfect up here. And I think that citizens will really love it, so.
Really excited.
I think one of the expectations for.
We, we will be breaking ground soon and we hope again we're still here.
Terrific. Awesome.
Thankful that you picked to come here and I think you guys are going to have great access. Like, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Boyson and then when Tower Terrace punches in, that's going to be awesome. Great site for you guys, so.
The vendors are really excited about that.
I can, I can see that driving down First Avenue today, I was like, wow. Those truck drivers are going to have a great day.
Well, hopefully we make the contractors that are doing your project happy too, so make it easy and, and we work well together, so. Yep.
Welcome to Hiawatha.
Yeah.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at 5:43. Consider resolution approving and authorizing execution of the development agreement between, among the City of Hiawatha, Denmark Inc., DBA, Ogden Adams, Lumber and Lumberland Partners LLC.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Next item, 2021 Street Improvements Project. A, public hearing to consider the proposed plans and contract of estimates of cost on file and direct publication of notice to bidders. And we'll start that public hearing at 5:43. And did we receive anything in the mail?
No, we did not.
I, I like it when the bids come in under the estimate of the engineer.
Who would expect that nowadays? Yeah, good job. Okay, anybody else want to talk about the street improvements? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 5:44. And review bids. You got those in front of you?
Uh, the low bid was LL Pelling with a bid of 155,47150.
Perfect. Okay, consider resolution awarding contract for 2021 Street Improvements Project, obviously to LL Pelling. Do we have a first?
So moved to move forward with LL Pelling with a bid of 155,47150.
Perfect. Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number nine, public hearing to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 101, Stormwater Detain, Detention System 101.03 rates by increasing the monthly rate for commercial and industrial and residential properties. A, consider first reading.
Open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Whoops. Okay. Mine don't say that. Carrie, if you put it down, I'm going to read it. Okay, we're open the public hearing at, at 5:45. And did we receive anything in the mail?
No. We did not receive anything in the mail, but.
Did have one communication. I'll let John share that.
Okay.
Hopefully you can hear me. Yeah, we had one, one lady call in over the last couple of days. We've had a little bit of communication follow-up by email. It was up on, it was Martha's Way condo as well as Midwest Aerospace, I think it is. So, but the real question was how is it broken up as far as the fee breakdown on a commercial site? Especially when you have multiple tenants inside of a building. And as I have explained previously, on a building that's got three different tenants in it, I had broken it up by thirds and then unless somebody comes to me and explains like she did, they have 13%. The middle address has 20% and then the biggest part of it is 67%. So then I was able to break it down further for her. And that might be required as well throughout the community if people want it. Because I can't tell, you know, based on a building, how many square feet they have out in existing buildings. So with that being said, I explained the rates to her and she had follow-up questions this morning or yesterday. And we, I've since responded to her and she's happy with the comments and the feedback that she has received. The, the odd part about her one example was that she has two meters in her building and come to find out that one of them is set up for an irrigation. And she didn't quite understand that she still gets charged for that meter. And I said, the only way that's going to go away is if the meter is pulled. So she's working with the water department on whether to keep that or not. But as we know, as we've previously discussed, again, we bring in about $147,000 a year to date. And our CIP, including this year, includes $287,000 worth of needs. And one street on South 11th, right now our estimate is 200,000. So we are actually taking that project as today's revenue works. It would be stretched over two years. So even though the CIP has been approved for 287 in fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23 at 475,000, we really can't do those projects until we actually have the money in the bank. So those would be stretched out over five years anyway. So we are proposing residential and fiscal year, well, a five-year step increment with residential going from $4.25 to $5.25 per month in fiscal year 26. Commercial is starting at $5.50, going up to $8 or 50 cents a year increase. But it's the residential base rate plus an incremental rate per 10,000 square feet. And then the mobile home units would start at $3.75 and go up 10 cents a year from $3.75 to $4.15 in fiscal year 26. So the, in the, as a, in the end, at five years, we should be having a revenue of around $350,000.
Okay. Um, any questions from the council?
I, I know we've talked about this. I know personally, I've still not being able to bring myself to support this as I do feel it's a little bit compacted in terms of our timeframe. Both as, well, a couple of reasons. I think one, we're rushing into this a little bit. And two, I do think that with all the craziness in the business world and the price increases and fluctuations, I do think it's the wrong time to lead with some of these rates. Now, I will admit I probably am an outlier in that belief, but it does lead me not to be able to support the resolution as it's presented tonight.
I'd like to comment for, you know, presented to us, there was a problem that should have been dealt with long ago. And it would have been easier to ease into it by John proposing to, you know, not do it all at once and to do it over the next five years. I think that's fair. We, we have sewer issues that are pending and, you know, we can't walk away from them. So we, we got to do something. It's unfortunate, I don't like taxes. You know, I, I'm not for it, but I, I can see the, the need here. We would, this is also for the citizens we represent. You know, if we don't do anything, we're going to continue to have sewer problems. And then they're going to be knocking on our door saying, why didn't we do something? So that's why I support it.
Yeah, I, I don't like having to raise these rates, but I think it is something that needs to be done. And one of the things that I hear most from citizens is my street has water retained on it. What's this issue? And relating to things that are going to be fixed by this. So I definitely think it's something that needs to be done. I appreciate John and the other staff putting in time to figure out how to do this right and kind of looking at examples from across the state and seeing how we can do it to make it fit for us. And I, I think they've done a good job, so.
I still feel you could do it over seven years and still arrive at it and make it less on us and the business community. But like I said, ultimately, you know, I, I was, I can acknowledge that I'm probably still an outlier on this, but that is what it is.
I should make note that we did send out letters to all commercial as well as Sunset and Molly High Mobile Home Courts, just to make sure that they were aware, even though it was in the newsletter, but I want to make sure that they were aware that this was coming in, that there was a public hearing tonight.
John, I think it's worthwhile. This decision was not taken lightly. If I recall, you and the staff spent four to five months.
Correct.
Reviewing this. So you might want to just sum that up.
Well, okay. So as we talked in the work session and more for those out here in the audience, yeah, we started back in January looking at the different rates. And we started in 2005, bringing in an annual revenue of 45,000. And in 2020, we had a revenue of $147,000. So we did look at City of Marion, Cedar Rapids. I've even seen articles from Newton, but also talking to Cedar Falls and just looking at how we could go about coming up with our shortfall in revenue. Because this really needs to be an enterprise fund of money in, money out. And so that's really what we are trying to achieve here is that we have money in the bank to be able to do the projects just like Jerry and Rob have indicated. We're going to continue to get requests for storm sewer improvements where there is no storm sewer today. So we are really just trying to maintain our existing infrastructure, work on capital improvement projects, and then also maintain our federal and state permit requirements. And so that's really our goal here is, is, and then also in early May, we did meet with our committee, our Stormwater Committee, and we went through the whole, the whole scenario again, just like we've done with work, the work session on May 17th. And they were in favor of moving forward with these rates as well. And then that's what is ultimately what was presented on May 17th of the work session. Is that answered?
Yeah, thank you, John. I applaud the work that you guys did.
We, we have been fortunate to this point. I think most of our infrastructure is fairly new compared to other cities around us. And so as that ages, it's just going to become more of an issue. And if we kick it down the road, it's just going to get worse.
Well, sadly, that maybe some of the calculations back in the day weren't correct. You know, and they got slipped through or things. Yeah, so. It's a problem. Nobody likes it, but somebody's got to pay for it. Okay, anything else? Did we receive any letters, Carrie?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll close the public hearing at 5:55. And A, consider first reading? Is that right? Am I doing the right thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
B, consider waiving second and third reading.
Were we going to hold off on, I thought we were going to stretch that out to allow for a greater public education time just to go through, let it do the normal second and third readings.
That's up to you, up to you guys.
Okay.
It would be fine with letting, holding the second and third reading to allow for a greater public education on the stormwater rate fees.
Okay.
I would move the motion.
Okay. So that would be a first and a second? All favor? Is that how we do it?
Yeah, we, you have to, yeah.
And just go ahead and do roll call on that as well. You got a first and second, so.
Yeah, vote, so roll call.
Hold on, so the motion is to move forward with the second and third readings?
To waive the second and third readings.
To waive it?
Okay.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
I'm moving the motion as it gives.
Okay. I thought you were seconding hers. Thank you. Okay, got it.
I'm confused also.
Thank you for the clarification. So we have a motion on the table from Dick.
So.
To waive the second, third reading. So ask, now ask for a second. We have, we have a motion.
My second.
Dick's motion.
Okay. Now roll call.
Now roll call.
And this is to waive the, the readings?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Reporting clarification, you actually need four votes to waive the second and third reading, correct?
No, it doesn't take a super majority.
Yeah, not for this, for the, for the first reading. Is my understanding.
I always thought you had to have a super majority to waive the second and third readings.
I'm sorry. Yes, to waive, to waive, you need a super majority, yes. So with the, it's two of three. Okay. All right.
Okay, move on to the next item? We good?
So we'll, we'll put, we'll have to put this back on.
On the next agenda. Yep, okay.
And just to be clear, when we do this, this truly is just about education. This, it does not bring another public hearing. It's just to.
No, it's just about education process.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Confusing, okay.
Come on in. Robert's rules are real.
Number 10, consider resolution awarding contract for the rehabilitation of the Fire Department's aerial ladder truck, number one.
So move. Second.[1785.61]
Discussion? Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Number 11, consider resolution accepting Fire Chief Nesloggi's resol- or resignation, authorizing interim Fire Chief position and extending staff and authorizing to begin the process to fill the Fire Chief position. Vacancy effective June 26th, 2021.
So moved.
This is where we can just keep him on.
Yeah, we don't have to accept, right?
That's right.
You know, when he called me, I was excited for him. I'm like, you know, you're healthy.
Yeah.
Lucky guy. Do it.
A second.
We got a first and a second? Roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 12, Parks and Recreation, replacement of mower and bat wing. A, consider resolution authorizing the Parks Department replacement of a commercial lawnmower unit 360, including sale of current unit 360 to the Water Department. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
And B, consider resolution authorizing the Park Department replacement of commercial 2017 Land Pride Flex mower bat wing, including trade-in.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number 13, consider resolution authorizing Park and Recreation Department to replace community center tables and chairs.
So moved. Uh, I was just curious, what are we doing with the old, uh, are they just being thrown out, or we have a place that are taken? Okay, sounds good.
We got a first and a second?
I need a second.
Second. Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number 14, consider resolution authorizing the submittal of a, an application for the Iowa Department of Transportation Traffic Study Improvement Program, S, or TSIP, for the, uh, intersection of 12th Avenue and Boyson Road and restruct- reconstruction and intersection of the roundabout. Did you get that?
So moved. Second.
The good thing is they're all excited about it.
Do we, wow, the times changed. Do we think we have a good chance of getting the funding, or is it pretty competitive? I mean, obviously it's competitive, but does our project look like it'll rank high?
Yeah, it is a very competitive process, and, but it should rank pretty high. But the reason we're doing it this year is that if we don't get it this year, we have another year, and then we can resubmit next year. So that's the reason we're going early.
Was there increase, increase in the funding, what they're doing for this, these projects? It's part of the infrastructure?
I'm not sure if it was in.
Not in the T-SIP.
At this, okay.
Yeah, not for this part.
Okay. Okay, we got a first and a second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye. Second time I've had to vote for a roundabout, I feel good.
No, you'll be all right. You'll get over it. Replace, uh, placement of items for next agenda and work session, anybody? If not, you know.
Make motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 6:02. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations again, Mike.
Like, you just leave it, just like, it's fine.